All right, good evening, everyone. I'd like to bring us back from a recess from our meeting on September 10th. I'm Mayor PJ Connolly, and I'll be continuing to moderate this meeting. We'll jump right into our public hearings. We'll move to item number seven. Madam Manager?
Thank you, Mayor. Item number seven is an ordinance to annex the Blackwelder Properties LLC property involving 3.879 acres located between Greenville Boulevard and Tupper Drive and south of Marine Avenue.
All right, thank you very much. Madam Clerk, were there any additional comments that were made within that 24-hour statutory period?
No, sir, we did not receive any comments during that 24-hour period.
All right. Any discussion or motion from the council?
I move to approve it, Meyerhofer.
Second.
All right, motions been made by Councilmember Meyerhofer, second by Councilmember Bell. All those in favor say aye, those opposed say nay. I'll call on the city clerk for the vote.
Mayor Pro Tem Glover?
Aye.
Councilmember Daniels?
Aye.
Councilmember Bell?
Aye.
Councilmember Litchfield?
Aye.
You'll have to announce yourself and then vote.
This is Councilmember Litchfield, aye.
Thank you. Councilmember Meyerhofer?
Aye.
Mayor, that's six zero in approval.
All right, thank you very much. We'll move on to item number eight. Madam Manager?
Thank you. Item number eight is an ordinance to annex the Edmondson Properties LLC property involving 6.771 acres located near the northeastern corner of the intersection of Allen Road and Briar Cliff Drive.
All right, Madam Clerk, were there any comments that were made in that 24-hour statutory period?
No, sir, Mayor Connolly, we did not receive any comments.
All right, thank you very much. Any discussion or motion by the council?
Move to approve.
Second, Meyerhofer.
All right, motion's been made by Councilmember Bell, second by Mayor Pro Tem Glover. All those in favor say aye, those opposed say nay. I will now call on the city clerk for the vote.
Mayor Pro Tem Glover?
Aye.
Councilmember Daniels?
Aye.
Councilmember Bell?
Aye.
Councilmember Smiley?
Aye.
Councilmember Litchfield?
This is Councilmember Litchfield, aye.
Councilmember Meyerhofer?
Aye.
Mayor, that's six zero in approval.
All right, thank you very much. We'll now move on to item number nine. Madam Manager?
Thank you. Item number nine is an ordinance to annex West Haven South Lot Two, Section Five, involving 1.956 acres located along the south of Regency Boulevard and along the eastern right-of-way of Blazer Drive.
All right. Madam Clerk, were there any comments that were made that were submitted within that 24-hour statutory period?
No, sir, we did not receive any comments during that 24-hour period.
Thank you very much. Is there any discussion or motion for the council?
I'll move to approve it, Meyerhofer. I'm playing by myself.
Second.
All right, motion's been made by Councilmember Meyerhofer, second by Councilmember Bell. All those in favor say aye, those opposed say nay. I'll now call on the city clerk for the vote.
Mayor Pro Tem Glover?
Aye.
Councilmember Daniels?
Aye.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. Councilmember Bell?
Aye.
Councilmember Smiley?
Mute.
Or maybe frozen?
Frozen, there we go.
Councilmember Smiley?
Aye.
Okay, Councilmember Litchfield?
This is Councilmember Litchfield, aye.
Councilmember Meyerhofer?
Aye.
Mayor, that's six zero in approval.
Thank you very much. We'll now move on to item number 10. Madam Manager?
Thank you. Item 10 is an ordinance requested by Amy A. Edwards to rezone a total of 14.221 acres located along Portertown Road between Eastern Pines Road and Norfolk Southern Railroad from RA 20 to General Commercial, 5.03 acres of the tract, and R 6, 9.183 acres of the tract.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, did we have any comments that were made within that 24-hour statutory period?
No, sir, we did not receive any comments.
All right, thank you very much. Is there any discussion or motion by the council?
I had a question for the traffic engineer. I understood he had some additional traffic, additional information related to traffic on these roads in the event that this was fully built out.
He did, Councilmember Smiley, it appears that he wasn't able to make it on the call. He did let me know, though, he wanted to clarify that he checked with NC DOT, and right-of-way for the Fire Tower Portertown project is scheduled for 2026, and construction is scheduled for 2028.
So, eight years from now. And that's the beginning of construction?
Correct.
Yeah. Okay, I have no more questions for staff, so I have a discussion, but if anybody else has questions, I'll wait.
Any other questions for the staff? Anything on? Councilmember Smiley?
I just would, I don't think, I think this is premature rezoning. There's already too much traffic on those streets anyway. If I recall from last week, then it's all, you know, the design of the street is something like 12,000 or 13,000 trips per day, and it's already at, you know, 13,000 or 14,000 trips per day, and this puts like 5,000 more trips per day on those roads. We're just heard from staff that the DOT doesn't think that they'll be expanded for eight years, so to pass this rezoning at this point would be just magnifying a traffic problem in that area. I would, I encourage council to vote against this rezoning for that purpose, that reason.
All right, thank you. Any other comments by the council? Okay, their preference by the council?
I move, I'll follow up my comments with a move to disapprove.
All right, so been a motion to disapprove of the request?
Deny, I guess.
Denial of the request? There are second?
Second, Daniels.
All right, motion's been made by Councilmember Smiley, second by Councilmember Daniels to deny the request. All those in favor say aye, those opposed say nay. I'll now call on the city clerk for the vote.
Mayor Pro Tem Glover?
Nay.
Okay, Councilmember Daniels?
Aye.
Councilmember Bell?
No.
Councilmember Smiley?
Aye.
Councilmember Litchfield?
Councilmember Litchfield, no.
Councilmember Meyerhofer?
Nay.
Motion fails, Mayor. Four to two.
All right.
Move to approve, Councilmember Litchfield.
Second.
All right, motion's been made by Councilmember Litchfield, second by Councilmember Bell to approve the rezoning request. All those in favor say aye, those opposed say nay. I will now call on the city clerk for the vote.
Mayor Pro Tem Glover?
Um, nay.
Okay, Councilmember Daniels?
Nay.
Okay, Councilmember Bell?
Aye.
Councilmember Smiley?
Nay.
Councilmember Litchfield?
Aye.
If you'll just announce yourself.
Councilmember Litchfield, aye.
Okay, Councilmember Meyerhofer?
Aye.
Okay. Mayor Connolly?
Aye.
Motion passes, Mayor. Four to three.
That's the first reading, Attorney McGirt. The first reading, you need two-thirds vote to pass an ordinance, and I would just recommend this be placed on the next council agenda for a vote. At that time, if it got the same vote at the next meeting, it would pass.
You need a motion for that, or?
Yeah.
Or does it happen automatically?
I would ask council to pass, consider a motion to place it on the next council agenda for a vote.
Same moves.
Second, Meyerhofer.
All right, motion's been made by Councilmember Smiley, second by Councilmember Meyerhofer to place this on the next council agenda in October. All those in favor say aye, those opposed say nay. I'll now call on the city clerk for the vote.
Mayor Pro Tem Glover?
Aye.
Councilmember Daniels?
Aye.
Councilmember Bell?
Aye.
Councilmember Smiley?
Aye.
Councilmember Litchfield?
Aye. Councilmember Litchfield, aye.
Councilmember Meyerhofer?
Aye.
Okay, that motion passes, Mayor, six zero.
All right, thank you very much. We'll now move on to item number 12. Madam Manager? I'm sorry, item number 11.
Item number 11. Item number 11 is an ordinance requested by Happy Trail Farms LLC to rezone 33.849 acres located north of the intersection of Herman-Garris Road and Portertown Road from RA 20 to R 6S.
All right, thank you very much. Were there any, Madam Clerk, were there any comments that were made during that 24-hour statutory period?
No, sir, we did not receive any comments for this item during that period.
All right, thank you. Any discussion or motion by the council?
Move to approve.
All right.
Second, Meyerhofer.
Motion's been made by Councilmember Bell, second by Councilmember Meyerhofer to approve the item. All those in favor say aye, those opposed say nay. Now call on the city clerk for the vote.
Mayor Pro Tem Glover?
Aye.
Councilmember Daniels?
Aye.
Councilmember Bell?
Aye.
Councilmember Smiley?
Aye.
Councilmember Litchfield?
Councilmember Litchfield, aye.
Councilmember Meyerhofer?
Aye.
Motion passes, Mayor, six zero.
Thank you very much. We'll now move on to item number 12. Madam Manager?
Thank you. Item number 12 is a request by PB Builders LLC to rezone a total of 9.873 acres located in the Cobblestone subdivision at the terminus of Quail Drive from RA 20 to R 6.
Madam Clerk, were there any comments that were made during the 24-hour statutory period?
No, sir, we did not receive any comments.
Thank you. Any discussion amongst the council or entertainment of emotion?
Move to approve.
Second.
All right, motion's been made by Councilmember Bell, second by Mayor Pro Tem Glover. All those in favor say aye, those opposed say nay. Now call on the city clerk for the vote.
Mayor Pro Tem Glover?
Aye.
Councilmember Daniels?
Aye.
Councilmember Bell?
Aye.
Councilmember Smiley?
Aye.
Councilmember Litchfield?
Councilmember Litchfield, aye.
Councilmember Meyerhofer?
Aye.
That's six zero in approval, Mayor.
Thank you very much. We'll now move on to item number 13. Madam Manager?
Item number 13 is an ordinance requested by Stark Holdings LLC and Trade Holding LLC to rezone a total of 5.756 acres located between West 10th Street and West 8th Street and west of South Washington Street from CDF and IU to CD.
All right, Madam Clerk, were there any comments that were made during the statutory period?
No, sir, we did not receive any comments.
All right. There's any discussion? All right.
Second.
All right, motion's been made by Councilmember Smiley, second by Councilmember Bell. All those in favor say aye, those opposed say nay. I'll now call on the city clerk for the vote.
Mayor Pro Tem Glover? Mayor Pro Tem Glover, she may be frozen.
She's frozen.
I can come back to her vote if you like, Mayor.
All right.
Councilmember Daniels? Councilmember Bell?
Aye.
Councilmember Smiley?
Aye.
Councilmember Litchfield?
Councilmember Litchfield, aye.
Councilmember Meyerhofer?
Aye.
She appears to have dropped out. Should we?
See if we can get her back up here real quick.
Okay.
Can someone call her, Valerie?
I'll call her right now.
Okay. Rob?
Oh, Rob, okay. I'm sending her contact information over to him right now. We're going to see if we can get her the dial-in information so she can call in like Councilmember Litchfield.
Brock ought to have put up a cool graphic or something like this, you know? Council is having technical difficulties.
Man, you're moving all over the place.
This is even cooler. Put your thumb over the camera and it forgets where you are.
Valerie, have we made contact with Ms. Glover yet?
Valerie's on the phone with her right now.
Okay, thank you.
This can't be helping our ratings. Yes.
Oh, okay.
All right, we are back. Madam Clerk, I believe we have one more. One more person needs to vote, Councilmember or Mayor Pro Tem Glover?
Mayor Pro Tem Glover, this is for the Stark Holding Rezoning. You vote in favor or against? Do you just have to announce yourself?
Okay, Mayor Pro Tem Glover, I vote yes.
Okay, Mayor, that's six zero in approval.
All right, thank you very much. Well, now move on to item number fourteen, Madam Manager.
Item number fourteen is an ordinance requested by Langston Farms LLC to amend the future land use and character map for 1.881 acres from office institutional to commercial for the property located at the northeastern corner of the intersection of South Memorial Drive and Regency Boulevard.
All right, Madam Clerk, were there any comments made during the twenty-four hour statutory period?
No, sir, Mayor Connolly, there were not.
Thank you very much. Any discussion amongst the council or?
Motion to approve.
Second, Smiley.
All right, motion's been made by Councilmember Meyerhoffer, second by Councilmember Smiley. All those in favor say aye, those opposed say nay. I will now call on the city clerk for the vote.
Okay, Mayor Pro Tem Glover?
Mayor Pro Tem Glover, aye.
Okay, Councilmember Daniels?
Aye.
Councilmember Bell?
Aye.
Councilmember Smiley?
Aye.
Councilmember Litchfield?
Councilmember Litchfield, aye.
Councilmember Meyerhoffer?
Aye.
Mayor, that's six zero in approval.
Thank you very much. Well, now move on to item number fifteen, Madam Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. Item number fifteen is an ordinance requested by the Planning and Development Services Department to amend the city code by creating a use classification and associated standards for small private schools.
All right, Madam Clerk, were there any comments made during the twenty-four hour statutory period?
No, sir, we did not receive any comments during that period.
All right, thank you very much. Any discussion?
I have a question for the planning staff.
All right, Councilmember Smiley?
Can you explain that there was some confusion after our meeting about what constituted a third-party use? Can you walk through the distinction between what a school use would be and a third-party use?
Just a moment, let me pull up, let me share my screen with you guys. Okay, so essentially, a third-party use is a use that doesn't involve the school in any way. So that's like the school's athletics program, that's school programming, any events they might have related to the actual school itself, like a festival or something like that, or events sponsored by the school. And this is where the confusion, I think, comes in a little bit. And so in order for an event to be considered not a third-party use and sponsored by the school, the institution needs to really take a lead role in the event. It has to organize it, it's got to provide staff, maybe not 100% of the staff, but it's got to have, you know, it's got to be heavily involved in the, in the actual organization, promotion, and running of the event. So we've got an example up here of a school event and a third-party use using Riley's Army, which has been talked about a little bit. So the school might host a fundraiser for Riley's Army, where they organized it and, you know, students or staff went out and actually worked the tables or whatever it is they had going on. They were involved, they were participating. That would be a school use, because the school was holding a fundraiser and there was a specific particular cause, or maybe there was another organization involved, but it was actually hosted in an active way by the school. Whereas, say Riley's Army just wanted to run their normal event that they do somewhere else, and they just ran it straight up on the fields, they rented out the property, the school wasn't organizing it. That would be a very clear third-party use. And one thing that's important to keep in mind is that these rules only involve light and sound, so, so, you know, a third-party could use it if they were just out, you know, on the fields without the lights and with, you know, music or sound of some sort up to the sixty decibels that was discussed at Thursday's meeting. Does that answer your question?
It does, thank you.
Sure.
All right, any other questions or comments by the council? Anyone like to entertain a motion then?
Mayor and Council, Attorney McGirt, I think Mr. Xavier also had a copy, a clean copy of the ordinance that reflects the same version that was discussed on Thursday night, but it's a clean copy to show the public and the council what will be enacted by the council if this passes.
Thank you very much.
Hi, Brett Xavier again. This is, it's, as Mr. McGirt said, this is just the same language that was discussed. There was a marked-up version of this that was shown at the last, at the council meeting on Thursday night, and this is just the completely changed version. This number twelve here, if you'll remember, was added in, and that was highlighted on the last version, but it's just in here now. This is what's actually going to be, oh, sorry, this is what's actually going to be voted on. And if passed, this will become the, the law and the regulatory framework for these third parties, for these private schools.
Thank you very much. Any other comments or questions by the council?
Councilmember Litchfield moved to approve.
Second, Daniels.
All right, motion's been made by Councilmember Litchfield, second by Councilmember Daniels. All those in favor say aye, those opposed say nay. I'll now call on the city clerk for the vote.
Mayor Pro Tem Glover?
Mayor Pro Tem Glover, aye.
Councilmember Daniels?
Aye.
Councilmember Bell?
Aye.
Councilmember Smiley?
Aye.
Councilmember Litchfield?
Councilmember Litchfield, aye.
Councilmember Meyerhoffer?
Aye.
Mayor, that's six zero in approval.
Thank you very much. We'll now move on to item number sixteen, Madam Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. Item number sixteen is a resolution to close a portion of Josh Court.
There any, Madam Clerk, are there any comments that were made during the twenty-four hour statutory period?
No, sir, we did not receive any comments.
All right, thank you. Any comments or discussion amongst the council?
Move to approve. Move to approve.
Second, Meyerhoffer.
All right, motion's been made by Councilmember Smiley, second by Councilmember Meyerhoffer. All those in favor say aye, those opposed say nay. I'll now call on the city clerk for the votes.
Mayor Pro Tem Glover?
Aye.
You'll just announce yourself?
Both, Mayor Pro Tem, aye.
Okay, Councilmember Daniels?
Aye.
Okay, Councilmember Bell?
Aye.
Councilmember Smiley?
Aye.
Councilmember Litchfield?
Councilmember Litchfield, aye.
Councilmember Meyerhoffer?
Aye.
Okay, that's six zero in approval, Mayor.
Thank you very much. Well, now move on to item number seventeen, Madam Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. Item number seventeen is a resolution to close a portion of Ridgeway Street.
All right, Madam Clerk, were there any comments that were made during the twenty-four hour statutory period?
No, sir, there were no comments received.
Thank you very much.
Move to approve.
Second.
All right, motion's been made by Councilmember Smiley, second by Councilmember Daniels. All those in favor say aye, those opposed say nay. I'll now call on the city clerk for the votes.
Mayor Pro Tem Glover?
Mayor Pro Tem Glover, aye.
Okay, Councilmember Daniels?
Aye.
Councilmember Bell?
Aye.
Councilmember Smiley?
Aye.
Councilmember Litchfield?
Councilmember Litchfield, aye.
Councilmember Meyerhoffer?
Aye.
Mayor, that's six zero in approval.
Thank you very much. Well, now move on to item number eighteen, Madam Manager.
Thank you. The next item is the approval of the draft 2019 Consolidated Annual Performance and Evaluation Report.
All right, Madam Clerk, were there any comments that were made during the twenty-four hour statutory period?
No, sir, we did not receive any comments.
All right.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion's been made by Councilmember Smiley, second by Councilmember Bell. All those in favor say aye, those opposed say nay. I'm now calling the city clerk for the vote.
Mayor Pro Tem Glover?
Mayor Pro Tem Glover, aye.
Okay, Councilmember Daniels?
Aye.
Councilmember Bell?
Aye.
Councilmember Smiley?
Aye.
Councilmember Litchfield?
Councilmember Litchfield, aye.
Councilmember Meyerhoffer?
Aye.
Okay, Mayor, that's six zero in approval.
Thank you very much. Well, now move on to item number nineteen, Madam Manager.
Thank you. The next item is the 2020-2021 Annual Action Plan for CDBG, CDBG CV and Home Programs.
All right, Madam Clerk, were there any comments that were made during the twenty-four hour statutory period?
No, sir, we did not receive any comments.
Thank you.
Move to approve.
Second.
All right, motion's been made by Councilmember Smiley, second by Councilmember Daniels. All those in favor say aye, those opposed say nay. We'll now call on the city clerk for the votes.
Mayor Pro Tem Glover?
Mayor Pro Tem Glover, aye.
Councilmember Daniels?
Aye.
Councilmember Bell?
Aye.
Councilmember Smiley?
Aye.
Councilmember Litchfield?
Councilmember Litchfield, aye.
Councilmember Meyerhoffer?
Aye.
Mayor, that's six zero in approval.
Thank you very much. Well, now move on to item number twenty.
Thank you, Mayor. Before we move to item twenty, I do want to share with the council on an item, a quick little footnote related to the annual action plan. We received some late-breaking word on Friday of some additional dollars coming from, from CDBG. And so over the next couple weeks, we will share with you those additional dollars in the plan, so that you will again see the update to this annual action plan. Just wanted to let you know. We'll move to item twenty. Item twenty is a resolution, an economic development agreement for a job creation grant for HC Composites LLC, doing business as WorldCap.
Madam Clerk, were there any comments that were made during the twenty-four hour statutory period?
No, sir, Mayor Connolly, we did not receive any comments.
Thank you very much. Any discussion amongst the council or entertainment of a motion?
Councilmember Litchfield, second.
All right. Motion was made by Councilmember Smiley, second by Councilmember Litchfield. All those in favor say aye, those opposed say nay. Now call on the city clerk for the vote.
Mayor Pro Tem Glover?
Mayor Pro Tem Glover, aye.
Councilmember Daniels?
Aye.
Councilmember Bell?
Aye.
Councilmember Smiley?
Aye.
Councilmember Litchfield?
Councilmember Litchfield, aye.
Councilmember Meyerhoffer?
Aye.
Mayor, that's six zero in approval.
All right.
So I think, I think Councilmember Litchfield made that motion, and I seconded it. So perhaps the record should, which should correctly.
He actually, he actually seconded it. You, you made the motion, he tried to, he tried to make them, and then he said Councilmember Litchfield, second.
I would be happy to let him make it, yeah.
Thank, thank you for your generosity, Councilmember Smiley. I believe that is it for the items. I'd like to now call on the city clerk who would like to request that we adopt a motion to go into closed session, as well as, I believe, to cancel our next city council meeting. Mayor, or excuse me, City Attorney McGirt?
Yeah, yeah, Mayor, Mr. Mayor and Council, I have two recommended motions. I recommend council adopt a motion cancelling the September 21st Joint Council GUC Meeting. I ask the council to take that one first.
Second.
All right, motion's been made by Councilmember Smiley, second by Councilmember Daniels. All those in favor say aye, those opposed say nay. I'll call on the city clerk for the vote.
Okay, Mayor Pro Tem Glover?
Aye. Mayor Pro Tem Glover, aye.
Thank you. Councilmember Daniels?
Aye.
Councilmember Bell?
Aye.
Councilmember Smiley?
Aye.
Councilmember Litchfield?
Councilmember Litchfield, aye.
Councilmember Meyerhoffer?
Aye.
Mayor, that's six zero in approval.
Thank you very much. Attorney McGirt?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mayor and council members, the second item is the city administration requests the council adopt the following motion, holding a closed session pursuant to North Carolina General Statute, Section 143, 318.11, to discuss matters relating to the location or expansion of industries or other businesses in the area served by the public body, including agreement on a tentative list of economic development incentives that may be offered by the public body in negotiations.
All right, thank you very much. Anyone want to entertain that motion?
I'm in.
Second.
All right, motion has been made by Councilmember Bell, second by Councilmember Daniels. All those in favor say aye, those opposed say nay. This is to go into closed session. I will now call on our city clerk for the vote.
Mayor Pro Tem Glover?
Mayor Pro Tem Glover, aye.
Councilmember Daniels?
Aye.
Councilmember Bell?
Aye.
Councilmember Smiley?
Aye.
Councilmember Litchfield?
Councilmember Litchfield, aye.
Councilmember Meyerhoffer?
Aye.
Mayor, that's six zero in approval.
Thank you very much. We are now in closed session. We will wait for the city staff to.
All right, we're back. Now, uh, we just need to get some...
Move to adjourn.
All right.
Second.
Motion's been made by Councilmember Smiley, second by Councilmember Meyerhofer to adjourn. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed say nay. I'll now call in the city clerk.
Mayor Proton Glover?
Mayor Proton Glover, aye.
Okay. Councilmember Daniels?
Aye.
Councilmember Bell?
Aye.
Councilmember Smiley?
Aye.
Councilmember Litchfield?
Councilmember Litchfield, aye.
Councilmember Meyerhofer?
Aye, please.
All right, mayor, that's six here on approval.
All right. Everybody have a great night. We are officially adjourned. We will see you...
Good night all.
All right. Good night, everybody.